I would like to welcome you to the Lexington County School District Three Board of Trustees regular monthly meeting. It is Tuesday, June the 11th, six o'clock. We are meeting in the Staff Development Room of Lexington Three District Office. Please let the record indicate that all board members are present except Mrs. Cheryl Burgess, Dr. Gary Anne Gunter, and Mr. Ty Boultonite. I welcome you all and thank you for coming. At this time, I call the meeting to order. Item 1.2 is the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by item 1.3, the prayer led by Mr. Kaufman. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray. Gracious heavenly Father, please guide our thoughts and our actions tonight and best lead our school district in a direction that pleases you. Bless our board members, administrators, teachers, and all of the staff with wisdom and guidance that will best support every child in our district every day. Please bless our community, our state, and our nation with peace and understanding. Thank you once again for the many blessings you've provided us. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. At this point, we are on item 1.4, Approval of the Agenda. You receive the agenda in your packet. Without objection, we will approve the agenda as presented. The agenda is approved. Also, item 1.5, or excuse me, yeah, 1.5, Approval of the Minutes for the May 14th, 2024 Public Hearing. The Approval of the Minutes for the, excuse me, Approval of the Minutes for the May 14th, 2024 Public Hearing of the 2024-2025 Proposed Budget and Regular Board Meeting were in your packet. Without objection, we will approve those as presented. The minutes are approved. At this time, we'll move on to 2.0, the Consent Items. Item 2.1 is the Financial Report with Mrs. Roden.
Good evening. You received your cash analysis and revenue and expenditure statements in your packet for the month of May. The noteworthy item to point out in May is we did the transfer to Capital Projects Fund to set aside funds for outlay that we're going to be performing in the district. Did you have any specific questions about the reports you received for May? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item 2.2, the Superintendent's Report with Dr. Atkinson.
Thank you. I know we have talked about graduations several times, but I just wanted to point out all the work that went in to have it ready. Our maintenance and custodial staff, they really put in a lot of hours and it was especially to set that gym up for the first time. It took a lot of work and effort and, you know, even starting with the floor protectors that go down like carpet squares, so it was, it was quite a lot. But speaking of that, though, the work, we weren't able to really utilize that facility since it's been open. So it's been open a month and we've had five major events in there already. So we've had, you know, our district retiree drop-in celebration, our senior career signing day, our high school graduation, our adulted graduation, and then last, at the end of last week, we had our first Lexington Three end-of-year celebration, the cookout. So if I add up all the people that have been in there in a month, it gets pretty close to 3,000 people who have already been through that building since we opened it. We've had boys and girls basketball practice already in there and volleyball, so it has been busy for the first month. Also with the new weight room, you might have saw the Facebook post for Monday that that officially kicked off the summer workout for all our male and female student athletes. And we had a little over 100 students go through the weight room on day one, and then if you count all of the student athletes that went through the new gym, on Monday we had over 150 student athletes from the middle school and the high school on campus either practicing, working out, or something, and that's significant number for, you know, percentage of our enrollment. We also, for the first time, had 20 new wrestlers that were down in the, in one of the dressing rooms there at the Fine Arts Center practicing for the first time. So it's been a lot of interest in that already as well. Our summer reading camp kicked off yesterday with our Summer Olympics theme. We had 106 students in 4K through grade eight that are participating. And summer meals will be kicking off this Thursday at the Elementary School Bus Loop from 10:30 to 12:00, and any child from birth through 18, they're eligible, and that'll be every Thursday this summer except for the week of July 4th. Students will pick up five breakfast meals and five lunches, as well as they get a hot Chicken Supreme sandwich, I think, every time they come, is that correct? So there will be something hot they can pick up, and that does end in the end of July. Starting next year, we've talked about the Golden Panther Pass, so beginning with this coming school year, our senior adults will be able to get into any of our athletic events for free, but they need to go ahead and get that senior, that Golden Panther pass, so we want to make sure that we continue to let that be communicated to come on in and get those completed. We had two state champions this spring in track and field, Kira Frye and Jaquan Corley. Kira's a ninth grader, Jaquan Corley's a 10th grader, and both were state champions in the Discus Throw. Kira also played so well that she qualified to go to the national competition that'll be starting the 13th through the 16th of June, and that'll be in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. So a freshman qualified for nationals, so lots of great things to come. I want to thank you, all of those that were able to come to the memorial dedication where we were able to honor Coach Hayward Boultonite and reveal his plaque. I know we've gotten lots of comments from the family appreciative of that as well. Our fourth and final Farm to Families event at the primary school occurred this morning, and that was from 9:00 to 11:00, and we had 85 students that participated, and we were able to give away a little over $9,000 in food to needy families, and that was through, again, the, from, through the South Carolina Department of Ag and USDA to be able to do that. We had five people from the Department of Ag today that were observing and, you know, and praising the events, and I think their district's already coming to model that and try to take that to other districts. We also have our first district that's going to be visiting our new gym on Thursday from Calhoun County. They wanted to take a look at that before they start planning to build, do some work on their facility. I think there will have more to come looking at some of our facilities, and that's all I have for this month.
It is so exciting to hear about the end-of-the-year activities and events going on, and I'm sure that New Gym has received many, many compliments. Thank you, Dr. Atkinson. Now, 3.0, Public Participation. Any cards, Mysterick? Thank you. All right, then moving along, we will move on to the Action Items. Item 4.1 is a request for the approval for the BLHS Cross Country Team to participate in the Low Country Invitational on Johns Island, South Carolina, on September the 27th through the 28th, 2024, with accommodations at the Moxie Charleston Downtown in Charleston, South Carolina, as Coach Castro will share the information with us. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank our Board of Trustees and Dr. Atkinson and Ms. Bryant and Mr. Beedenbo. So I'm just requesting some approval because we plan on staying overnight at, down at James Island, and I'm requesting this approval, and we wanted to stay overnight because our student athletes on the Cross Country Team, they work extremely hard year and year after, year after year. And this past season, last fall, we placed 10th at the state championship, which was the best finish, state finish in school history. We planned on doing even better this year, but these kids need some time to relax, and I feel like the September 27th through 28th weekend will be a good chance to not only relax, but also get some good competition, not only against teams from our state, but other states as well, as it's open to states from North Carolina, Georgia. It's a good exposure for our athletes. We have, I think, five seniors who plan on doing something when they leave, when they graduate high school, so it's good exposure for them. Our Cross Country Team plans on funding all expenses, starting with the hotels, dinner, breakfast, any expense that's needed to cover, we plan on fundraising to cover for. We already have some money in our account that can cover for some of it, but of course we need to do some this summer to cover the rest.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we give approval for the BLHS Cross Country Team to participate in the Low Country Invitational on Johns Island, South Carolina, September 27th and 28th of this year, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Kaufman for the approval for the Batesburg-Lizville High School Cross Country Team to participate in the Low Country Invitational on Johns Island, South Carolina, on September the 27th through the 28th, 2024, with accommodations at the Moxie Charleston Downtown in Charleston, South Carolina, as presented. And we have a second by Mrs. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, and good luck to the team. Item 4.2, 8% Bond Resolution, Approving Issuance of 2024 General Obligation Bonds with Mrs. Roden.
Hello. In your package, you received the bond resolution prepared by Franny Heiser with Burr and Associates. We are asking this evening to authorize the issuance of, not to exceed $2.5 million in general obligation bonds. This is under our 8% borrowing capacity. Our current assessed value is $58.7 million. Eight percent of that puts us at about $4.7 million, 4.699, but we told the voters that we would hold our debt service millage level, and we currently have 94.8 mills on the books, and we, we're going to take a look at where we are at June 30th after collections and see how much we can borrow, and with this money, we wish to fund capital improvements, including but not limited to roof replacement at the primary school and doing painting throughout, throughout the district. We have painting needs throughout the district, so it's, we can do other things as well, but that's, we have to pick a thing that we're going to mainly focus on when doing this. So we put this before you, we would be participating in the Skago Fall 2024 Bond Issue, if it pleases the board.
Any questions for Mrs. Roden?
We look at it with Compass Municipal, and we talk with the treasurer and make sure that the collections are where they are. We think it'll be about 2.5 million, which is about what we did last time, last year, and we've already encumbered those funds as well for other capital improvements throughout the district, so we already have more needs that we would like to address, and this, if we hold millage level, you know, we may not be able to get that 2.5, but we have to, have you all say yes, you're willing to do up to that, but we will hold it at the 94.8 mills?
How far away would we know?
When? August.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation, make a recommendation for approving 4.2, 8% Bond Resolution, approving issuance of the 2024 General Obligation Bonds, as presented by Ms. Roden.
We have a motion for Mrs. Carey for the approval of the 8% Bond Resolution, Approving Issuance of the 2024 General Obligation Bonds, as presented by Mrs. Roden. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mrs. Derrick. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Roden. All right, 4.3, Second Reading Approval of Proposed 2024-2025 Budget with Mrs. Roden.
Good evening again. Okay, last month, we had public hearing, and there were no comments on the presentation of the budget, and then we had first reading on May 14th at our regular scheduled board meeting, and per board policy, we have to have two readings to pass our general fund budget. So tonight, I'm going to go through, it's exactly what I presented before, but I'll go through hurriedly, just so, to bring it all back to you. Okay, we have, we're presenting a $29.8 million budget. This year's budget is 28 million. What we've done is increase existing salary schedules 2%, and given each employee a step if they're eligible. They become eligible if they work 80% of the current year's contract. That would make them eligible for a step, so everyone will get the 2% minimum, and we adjusted the teacher salary schedule, the state minimum this coming year is going to be $47,000, and we are proposing that our employees receive $47,500. We've adjusted substitute pay for amounts that we previously charged to Esser Funds, and we've adjusted for the maternity leave that we've, we have to pay now. Each female gets six weeks, and a husband will receive two weeks paid maternity, and that does not count against them towards their leave days. Employer fringes anticipated to increase 11.8%, 8% beginning January 2025, and we've increased our athletic stipends, $50 per sale. We've added wrestling, just as Dr. Atkinson was saying earlier, kids are already practicing, we've added those, and we've added some game day tech coordinators stipends. We are doing intercession weeks in the fall and spring, that was very successful, but we were paying for that with Esser money, we now have to pick that up in the general fund, and we are adding a dropout coordinator position and an assistant principal slash athletic director position, we split that into two FTEs. We're adding iSoftware and increasing property insurance and some energy costs, which bring us up to the $29.8 million. This budget is made up of 85.69% of salaries and fringes. We do have the option to do a tax increase based on the consumer CPI figure and population growth. We could go up 11.6 mills, but we do not anticipate, I mean, we do not suggest we do that at this point. We recommend utilizing 2.3 million of our existing fund balance to balance the budget. So this is what we recommend.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we grant second reading approval of Proposed 2024-2025 Budget as presented.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Kaufman for the second reading approval of Proposed 2024-2025 Budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
At this time, we will group item 4.4 and item 4.5 together. This will be the second reading approval of Policy GCCAA Sit Lea Bank and Policy GCCAAAR Sit Lea Bank. And we will hear from Mrs. Bryant.
Thank you so much. Good evening. These are the two policies that were presented last month, and there have been no changes to either of these since first reading.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve second reading of Policy GCCAA Sit Lea Bank and Policy GCCAAAR Sit Lea Bank.
Okay. We have a motion for Mrs. Derrick to give second reading approval for Policy GCCAA Sit Lea Bank and Policy GCCAAAR Sit Lea Bank. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Carey. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we will group item 4.6, item 4.7, item 4.8, and item 4.9, as Ms. Bryant presents second reading approval of Policy CA, Administration Goals, Priority Objectives, Policy CBD, Superintendent's Contract, Policy CBI, Evaluation of Superintendent, and Policy CFA, School Principals, Building Administrators.
Thank you so much. Like the other two policies, there have been no changes since first reading. Most of these are very, very simple changes, grammatical in nature. The only significant change was to designate October as the month for superintendent's evaluation, to align with your practice.
Any questions for Mrs. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we give second reading approval to Policy CA, Administration Goals, Priority Objectives, Policy CBD, Superintendent's Contract, Policy CBI, Evaluation of Superintendent, and Policy CFA, School Buildings, Building Administrators, as presented by the administration.
We have a motion from Mrs. Carey to give second reading approval of Policy CA, Administration Goals, Priority Objectives, Policy CBD, Superintendent's Contract, Policy CBI, Evaluation of Superintendent, Policy CFA, School Principals, Building Administrators, as presented by the administration. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Bryant. At this time, we'll move on to item 4.10, Second Reading Approval of Policy ADF, District Wellness, with Mr. Beedenbo.
Thank you, Ms. Boultonite, board members, Dr. Atkinson, thank you. We do have one change from the first reading, and it is naming the committee members who the Department of Education requested that we put, who will be serving on the committee, not the names, but what they represent. So we've added that to this policy for the second reading, and that is highlighted for Policy ADF, and we will, after, if it's approved, we'll add those people, we'll find people that are in these positions to serve on this Wellness Policy Committee. That is our only change for this policy.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we give second reading approval of Policy ADF, District Wellness, as presented by administration.
We have a motion from Mrs. Carey for second reading approval of Policy ADF, District Wellness, as presented by the administration. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Derrick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will group item 4.11, item 4.12, and item 4.13. Mr. Beedenbo will present first reading approval of Policy EBCB, Safety Plans and Drills, Policy EBCBR, Safety Plans and Drills, and the Attachment to Policy EBCBR, School Fire Drill Report Form.
Thank you, Ms. Boultonite. So EBCB is our safety drill. The Department of Education has requested that all districts, along with the School Board Association and the state fire marshal, have been working to come up with a model policy, so we're updating EBCB, Safety Plans and Drills, to be in compliance with the new policy that was presented to us from the School Boards Association and the State Department of Education, along with the fire marshal. So we're asking for approval to change, to bring our policy that was updated in January 2019. EBCBR is a new administrative rule for us, so we're just following their recommendations. We're actually doing all of this stuff now. We're kind of the head of the regulation, but we're making it official now, and then the school safety drill report is a new thing that we will be doing monthly. We, we actually do this now, we don't, we haven't been recording it on this form, the fire marshals, state fire marshal office The fire marshal's, state fire marshal office just, this was one of the things they wanted in this, so we're, our schools will fill this form out monthly. We, we track it now in a Google Sheet, but to be in compliance, we will complete this form monthly. So those are my requests for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion for first reading approval of Policy EBCB Safety Plans and Drills; first reading approval of Policy EBCBR Safety Plans and Drills; and first reading approval of School Fire Drill Report Form.
We have a motion for Mrs. Derek to give first reading approval of Policy EBCB Safety Plans and Drills; Policy EBCBR Safety Plans and Drills; and the attachment to Policy EBCBR School Fire Drill Report Form, as presented by the administration. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, I have a second from Mr. Kaufman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session, as indicated by item 5.1, for a discussion of personnel matters.
Okay. We have a motion from Mrs. Carey to go into executive session for the discussion of personnel matters. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kaufman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We are now in executive session.